Supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website and the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create and maintain and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on. Special recognitions?
None tonight.
None. And do we have student reps tonight? I don't see any.
Nope.
I'll seek approval of the minutes from January 8th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 8th, 2025 minutes.
Uh oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to abstain because I wasn't here, so. No student reps. And Ari, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain, for the superintendent's part.
Thank you. So as we do, we will begin this evening with our student spotlight. This evening, we have some, we have Erin Kane from Swanson Road along with two students, Lila Mang, how do you say it? Mang, and Quinn Shanahan, who are going to talk to us about Empowering Writers, which is our new writing program. So, and Dr. Lopez as well. I don't want to leave her out. So thank you for coming. Come on up.
I'll give a hand to Mrs. Kane. I'll stand in support.
Hi. So I'm going to talk about Empowering Writers. And this is a new program that our district has started this year. And so the teachers are learning it alongside with the students. Our students have started by learning about the shape that writing takes. And in the Empowering Writers program, writing takes two shapes. There is a diamond for narrative writing, and there's a pillar for informational or argumentative writing. So first, students learned about that. Then they started annotating text. And at the beginning, students would learn about the predictable components you would find in every text. They would circle the heading, underline the topic sentences, they wrote blurbs about the main idea of each paragraph, and there are step-by-step instructions letting them know what to do. As they gained their confidence, they grew a little more comfortable, there were less instructions, students were able to do it a little more independently, which was great. They learned about the building blocks of a student, of a story, literary elements like character traits, point of view, setting, plot. And I know it sounds like a lot of reading, and you're wondering, when are you going to get to the writing? And that's because all of the parts that make up a good text, you need to be able to recognize before you yourself can put them down on paper, before you can write them. And so our students became text detectives. They started learning about different genres of text, they started identifying genres, they were able to identify informational, opinion, narrative text. And each time students looked at a new text, they had different annotation prompts that they were looking for, as well as a summarizing framework that they would fill out, giving you the main ideas of the story, or of the text they were reading. Students became experts in annotating text. And they have now moved on to the slide that you can see, where we are moving from annotating a text to writing on our own. And so I'm going to let Quinn and Lila come explain this next slide to you.
We started our argumentative writing by first brainstorming. The question we were asked to respond to was should all schools have a pool and require swimming lessons in PE? Then, as a class, we came up with pros and cons for having a pool. For pros, we came up with you can get stronger, it's fun, it is a good, it's good for your physical and mental health, schools can fundraise to afford it, everyone can learn how to swim, you can become a stronger swimmer, and PE teachers could get paid for being lifeguards, and it is, it is educational and water safety. And for cons, we came up with not all people like swimming, not every school can afford it, pool maintenance is a lot, you could get bullied if you don't know how to swim, not everyone has a swimsuit, you need a lifeguard, the PE teacher might not be qualified, and there are other ways to build strength. The next step we did was use sentence starters and write claims to write about why it would be good to have a swimming pool and require swimming lessons in PE. This was made into a paragraph of pros we came up with to make the argument. For an example, it is easy to see that schools should require a pool, schools should have a pool and require swim lessons. Clearly, it is important for people to stay safe in the water. Everyone should consider the benefits of having a swimming lessons at school. The benefits of swimming lessons are clear. Looking at both sides of the issue leads to, leads to believe that all schools should have a swim lessons, and the evidence speaks for itself. All schools should have swim lessons. The next step in the process was to pick a side of the argument and begin using the argumentative pillar. It's basically a graphic organizer or first draft of your essay. It looks exactly like a pillar, and at the top, it has space to write the introduction, the main ideas, and details. At the bottom, it has the summarizing framework. This is, this is an example of the argumentative pillar. It was completed independently in class, it would be turned into many paragraphs, but I'll just read what would be the last paragraph. It is called the summarizing framework. The issue was, should all schools have a pool and require swim lessons in PE? My claim was not all schools should have a pool and require swim lessons in PE. My main reasons were not every school can afford swimming pools, you need a lifeguard, and the PE teacher may not be qualified, and finally, not everyone likes to swim.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our wonderful presenters this evening?
Any questions for anyone?
I have one. Did you enjoy this assignment? Was this, was this, it sounds like you guys really liked it. Nice. I love that.
Through the chair, are you envisioning a pool in your school someday? Is that what you're thinking? That would be cool.
Where did the idea come from? Is that like, is that come from the program to talk about those kind of things?
So the, the pool was an example.
I will ask, what would you say was the most enjoyable part of this project, and what was the most difficult part?
I think the most difficult part was coming up with like main ideas and making sure it's right. I liked making the progress in comments.
What was behind this part?
Coming up with the main ideas and details.
Through the chair, can I ask, is it done as a whole class or small groups?
So. Everything for Empowering Writers is geared towards a whole-class lesson.
Maybe we'll see a pool someday.
Maybe you can use this to write a letter to your parents about why maybe you deserve more like TV time or something like that, pro con. You know, this is the good, this is the bad. They look very happy with that part.
So I have a little bit of an advantage because I was nicely invited, like maybe I kind of invited myself, but I was invited to come to a lesson in Ms. Kane's class and saw a writing lesson, not this one, but a different one. And I was so impressed with the level of engagement and involvement of the students. I will say, the topic that day was if the Loch Ness monster was real, right? Something to that idea. So I think this program gives some pretty interesting things to think about, right? For kids and for grownups too, right? That's an interesting topic I like to think about too. But it was just really, certainly Ms. Kane was so well-prepared. It was unbelievable. But you could see that a lot of work had gone into having the kids be prepared because they knew what was expected, they participated, they were, at one point, she was like, okay, we gotta keep going, because everyone had something they wanted to add or to say or to contribute. And they all followed through with the assignment beautifully, and I'm hoping that this program, I think we've been really wanting for a writing program for a long time, and it seems like kids are really responding to it, and I think teachers are too. So really a great job. It was a wonderful lesson to see the day I was there, so I was happy to be there. And happy to see this tonight from another angle at another topic. So it was great. So nicely done.
Yes, these skills that you learn, you'll use your whole life too, so it's pretty good. Some good practicing there. And as, from someone who helps create budgets, we're not getting a pool.
We'll say not next year anyway. Not in the next three or four years.
Through the chair, where would we put it? There's no space.
That could be the next topic.
The roof is on the roof of the high school. That was always.
Basement of sorts. But it's a great idea. You guys did a fabulous job.
Thank you all so, so much. Nicely done. Can you come up and shake hands? And then we'll let you go after the meeting. How's that?
You too, Mrs. Kane.
You did a great job.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Great presenting. Great job.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Great job. Great job. Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Thank you, families, for coming in. You are all free to go. Right, because we'll rearrange. Yep. That'd be great.
Have a good night.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Bye, thanks for coming. Stay warm.
Awesome job.
Have a good night.
Thank you again.
Good night. Yeah, that was great, guys. Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, and I think, Madam Chair, you're going to speak with us this evening about our new student representative.
Yes.
Going a little out of order.
A little bit, sorry. So a few years ago, Dan Carpenter from the Board of Selectmen came and presented to us, recommending that we have a student join our school committee. And it took a couple of years to get the ball rolling, but it was something we were really interested in. So I went a couple of weeks ago to the high school and presented to, there were a bunch of kids in there, weren't there? Yes. Yeah, probably like thirty students about who we are, what we do, let me see, town dynamics, and how the school committee is involved with the town. Students were very interested in participating, so I had them write an essay telling me their strengths, why they're interested, and what they can add to the committee. And Chloe here sent in an essay that was fantastic. I actually have it. Do you want to read it? Or?
I mean, yeah, sure.
Yeah? I'm sorry, I have to grab my phone. I wasn't prepared for that. We need your phone?
Yeah. Real good, so.
Excited?
Oh, you saw that on the note.
Of course I do. I saved it. Oh my gosh. Technical difficulties here. All right, so can you read that?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't, so.
Should I begin?
Yeah.
My mom's face turned red as she asked me for help studying for the citizenship exam. The embarrassment in her voice stung, and I realized how the stigma around adult learners makes it harder to seek education. After understanding her shame, I've dedicated myself to creating inclusive educational environments. At Schoolhouse World, a global nonprofit tutoring platform, I've tutored over a hundred seventy students from thirty-three countries and received over three hundred positive ratings. Most importantly, Schoolhouse has taught me how diversity can bring different paths to understanding. Furthermore, I oversee sixty-seven thousand learners and tutors at Schoolhouse. Volunteering with the large global community has taught me how to navigate conflict, using communication to find common ground peacefully. I know there will be conflicting opinions at the school committee, but I'm dedicated to listening to everyone's input and working around disagreements. As a student of Auburn High School, I've seen how our school has recently become more diverse. Therefore, I'm especially eager to bring my experiences and observations as a student to create more equitable environments that better support Auburn's growing population of people of color. As a student school community member, I will use my experience fostering communication and understanding to help create more supportive environments for all students. I'm committed to working toward meaningful change that helps Auburn's community thrive.
Oh, that was wonderful. That was great. That was amazing. I mean, it was okay.
So do you want to tell them a little bit more about yourself and what year you are?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Chloe. I'm a senior from Auburn High School. Currently, I'm seventeen years old, but on the weekends, I like to do a lot of tutoring and community service. So that's a little about me.
What do you tutor?
I tutor in like pre-algebra, biology, SAT, basically like a bunch of subjects. Yeah.
All the easy ones.
You might have another student for you if you want. I might need some tutoring. So yeah, Chloe's great. Very excited to have her join our team. And she, I think you're excited, right?
Yeah, I'm excited.
And I explained to them in the meeting that I had with them that we use Robert's Rules. So here is your gift, a book about Robert's Rules.
Thank you.
But yeah, we, we use it loosely, so don't worry. There's a lot of interesting stuff in there. So yeah, welcome aboard. And I have to thank Dan Delakjamp too, because he really helped me through this process and get everything going, so. All good.
Through the chair, what's your plan for next year?
My plan for next year? I want to go to college, and I want to join the legal field. So I aspire to be either like a lawyer or like maybe a legislator. I'm not really sure, but I think I want to do something in law.
Awesome.
Good for you. Awesome. Awesome.
Well, this, we're excited to have you, and I think I've been fortunate to work with this committee. We have a wonderful school committee, but it's going to be a great addition to have a student voice at the table and to hear from you. So we're excited for that.
I'm excited too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your essay was wonderful.
It was awesome.
Through the chair, I have a digital version of the Roberts, if you want me to send it along to you. Oh, yes, well, I did get the.
The clip notes.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. All right.
All right, we're ready, we'll go back to unfinished business? Yes?
Hi, Chloe.
Hi, Chloe. Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Thank you, Chloe. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, policy updates.
Yes, so we are on the third reading of the Title IX policies that were given to you. Since our last meeting on Thursday, January ninth, the Title IX regulations were vacated by, I'm not going to read all of this to you. And so the order applies nationally and was issued. So at this point, we are required to go back to what the Title IX regulations were and to not implement the new guidelines. I suppose we can implement them, but it is not based on Title IX law, right, to do that. So I think at this point, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern. I do think some of the things that were in the new regulations related to investigations and that kind of thing, I think we will be cognizant of moving forward. But I think at this point, I don't think it would be wise to take any further steps, and I think we kind of just give it a little time for the dust to settle and see what happens in the coming months related to these. But I don't think it makes any sense to move forward with a vote at this time. I think, I also think that moving forward, we may find other situations like this that we're.
Backtracking.
Backtracking a little bit, so. All right. The next item I spoke about at the last meeting, the competency determination. Again, there are implications related to the competency determination based on ballot question two during the last election. And so each high school now in the state of Massachusetts is charged with developing what they believe should be used as the competency determination, which is something that typically is accomplished in your, by the end of your sophomore year. It is typically, it is always part of the graduation requirements, but it is a subset of it. Both are required in order to graduate. And so in your packet, you do have an outline of what's being recommended as the competency determination. Basically, what this is, it goes along with the Common Core, where we're looking at, by, by the time you're in tenth grade, you should have a passing grade in both grade nine and grade ten English courses, or the equivalent, which speaks to the support of some of our special education students, receiving a passing grade in both Algebra I and Geometry, or the equivalent, and a passing grade in Biology, which has always been the course that we've had students take in order to pass the MCAS and to be part of their determination. So really, we're not, these are not big changes for us, it's just the MCAS isn't there as the fourth, the fourth bullet for the competency determination.
So through the chair, my only question would be, so all of our special education students would still be able to, I'm thinking about our kids with significant special needs, now will be able to get a high school diploma?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as they meet, well, they have to meet the competency determination.
So like when it says or equivalent?
Or the equivalent, yes.
Yeah, that would cover them?
Yeah.
And what about for passing grade in Biology? Is there an equivalent there, or?
So the other choices that come out of the Common Core are chemistry, STEM, chemistry, physics, or STEM. So Biology was always the one that Auburn High School has used because it is the most accessible coursework for most students.
So like kids in, like the sub-separate classrooms, there's stuff for them too, that would, they'd be covered?
Yeah, and some of that goes through the alt as well, which is a whole different ball of wax.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a different, a little bit of a different animal.
Okay. Through the chair, I'm, I'm, do we need to flesh out the equivalent piece more? Because my concern is like, could a parent or a staff member argue that like, well, they took this in ninth and tenth grade, that should be considered equivalent, like, or is it case-by-case basis?
So I, so, so really, these, this, these are courses, like particularly in ninth grade, right? They all have to take an ELA, they all have to take math. I think this equivalent is really speaking more to the special education students who may take a modified version of a class, may take some of those. So that's really what this is speaking to, is really making sure that those kids are covered.
Okay. All right, any more questions?
I just have one through the chair, because I'm not an educator. The passing grade is, is what letter? Like, does a D minus cut it as passing, or you have to have a seventy-five?
Yeah, normally for us, it's a sixty.
Sixty, okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure like, that we're not, you know, holding them to like a three-oh, you know what I mean? Like I just, just want to, I just need a number to make it make sense in my head.
And I'm going to tell you, I suspect within the next year, this will be back before you. Because what I think is going to happen is the state's going to come out with some requirements that are going to cover this, that everyone's going to be held to. They just weren't prepared for this. I don't think they expected for the vote to go as it did, and so there wasn't a lot of backup and preparation to say, well, what are we going to ask everyone to do? Because seriously, to have every high school in the Commonwealth have a different, a different idea of not only the coursework, but potentially what is passing?
Right.
What is it? And it can be different from, from here to Oxford, to Milbury, to wherever. So I suspect in short order, there's going to be something else that comes out, but for the time being, we need to have something in place. And we do not have any graduating seniors that are impacted by this. So that's another good thing. This is really perfunctory at this point for this school year, where we're okay. Kids still have plenty of time, if there's anyone in younger grades, if they have to make something up, they can.
Through the chair, I think it would be great if the state did come out with something that's.
I agree.
Across the board, so we welcome that, to come back across.
Yeah, I agree with, it's, it's a definite equity issue.
Yeah, it has to, because how do you know that in, that in another district nearby, they're not saying, okay, you just have to take ninth grade English and bio, and that's it? And so like.
Yep, and I've also, there are some other districts who are still talking about like, no, they are committed to the MCAS, and they're going to keep it in there. And maybe we don't like that the MCAS went away. I didn't love the MCAS, but it was kind of that, it was the same bar. That's what it was. It was the same bar for everybody. And that's a good thing to have, right? When you have diverse communities and all that, there was at least something there. I think it needed a lot of improvement, and maybe that's what will come out of this. Maybe something better will come to be used across the state. But for now, we're all left to our own devices.
All right, okay.
Great. All right. Yeah, seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the HS competency determination as presented by the superintendent. Second.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to believe, but here we are at the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. This calendar is similar to what we have this school year. Obviously, everything changes a little bit because the calendar itself changes. To point out a few of the highlights or points of interest, I guess, we're looking at November, Veterans Day is on a Tuesday. We looked at having parent conferences, so a half-day on Monday, parent conferences for the rest of the day, gives everyone the next day off. There just wasn't a really good time. That's, that November time is when elementary schools in particular really want to have parent conferences. And so it's just funky with where Veterans Day is, and then the fact that this year, we had that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. So if you did it on the fifth, then it's a half-day the week before, it's a full day the following week, and then you got a week, and you got three days off. I worked with principals to see if we could push it into December. Well, then that gets late for other reasons based on the trimester schedule. So we did put the, the half-day for conferences there. Looking at the December break, we did put in a full day of school on the twenty-second and a half on the twenty-third, but then we wouldn't return until January fifth. Some places, talking about this, are giving folks the full two weeks. My concern with that now is the hot weather that we've been seeing in June. And I think if we can do anything to not push too far into June, I think we should, because that seems to be creating almost more issues than some of the bad weather in the winter. So that was a reason for that. It does have the five half-days throughout the year, much like we're doing this March, it has a half-day followed by a full day in March. We have one more half-day in May that's used for student placements. But other than that, it really is similar in scope to what we have this school year.
In this past year, they went back on the second, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, because it, oh, I'm not even going to remember, right? Christmas was on Wednesday, so Christmas Eve was on Tuesday. So it just seemed like people weren't, it was just too close to the holiday. Now it's moved another day, right, to Thursday, so you have a little bit more room at the beginning. But it doesn't make sense to come back on Friday, January second, for a day either.
My only concern, it went through the chair, I apologize.
My only concern, it, through the chair, I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead.
My only concern with the December one is there are a lot of families who travel for the holidays to see other family members and things like that. So, I'm just concerned with the, the 22nd and the 23rd right there for kids and their families with traveling. Because I know that, you know, there's only so many absences in a year.
And staff, too.
Mm, yeah.
Through the chair, I just, to play devil's advocate, I don't think we've ever had the two days before Christmas Eve off. And I just, you know, I think the more days that we're off in December are more days in June that, you know, people also travel. So, that's, you know, my thoughts.
So, if we were to not have school those two days, then that would push our last day to the 17th? And then you're very likely, with snow days, pushing into that week of the 22nd, into that. You have to figure we're going to have at least a couple, right?
Yeah, we always do.
We always have at least a couple, if not three, so. You know, I put it, I put it to, to you with, with what you think. Again, that we did keep it similar to this school year. But I, I, I completely see your, your point with folks traveling.
I mean, through the chair, I think, as both a parent and an educator, I think I'd rather have the days when it's freezing like this in December. But again, I can't really talk because I don't celebrate Christmas, so it doesn't have the same impact on me. But, but like, I think once, if you add those, if you take off the 22nd and the 23rd, then you run into hitting Juneteenth.
Yep. And, and that's
You only have one day, and then you, then you push it into the following week. Yeah, then you push it to the following week. So, I think, I think if we were to poll the teachers, many of them would be like, nope, we want the two days in December, so.
And that's usually when camps start, right? Like summer camp? I'm just thinking about parents who pay for like full weeks of summer camp. They, they have camp that week, right?
I, it really is, I know for my children's camp, it really is dependent on when Worcester schools ends.
Okay.
So, I, but, but it does depend, like if they go to Sleepaway or they go to other camps in the area, like, yeah, might push into camp time.
Through the chair, is it possible? Because I, I agree, I see both sides. And because we can see both sides, can we, can we poll parents on that and see how they, what they, what they feel? And see if it comes back that way? Or is that a no?
Sure. I can do that, I can put out a survey.
Yeah, just to kind of see where, where it lies, you know what I mean?
And just around that issue, the two days before, would they, would they? So, the question is, would they prefer to have 22, 23 off? Or? And get out on June 15th?
Yeah.
Or? Or have school with a half-day and get out potentially June 15th?
Maybe we should poll the teachers, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair, could you also change the first week of school? Because them coming into school for two days and then being off on a holiday, can we move the professional development days to the week before?
Can't with the teacher's contract.
No.
So, they have to start on the 25th?
And through the chair, I'll be completely honest, like, to ease into the year is so much better. Like, to have, for the teachers, they have four days the first week, right? And then they have, then they have one, two, three, four days the second week, and then it's a full week. Trust me, like, if, it's a lot. And for the kids to have, you know, one, two, one, two, three, four, like, it's just easier to ease it as they get older. Middle, like, upper elementary, middle school kids, like, they need that slow ease back in.
Sure. I'm going to take your word for it.
I'm telling you.
Because I look at it as complete and utter chaos.
Well, Jen, Jen is agreeing with me. She's like, huh, ease in, please.
So, this year, though, this past December, we, so, the 23rd was on a Monday, and it was a half-day.
No, we didn't have, we didn't have school.
Okay, yeah.
Because I couldn't see having a half-day on a Monday.
Right, yeah.
Even though we're having a half-day on a Monday in November, but it's a little bit different.
They're coming back.
Because it's, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it didn't seem to make sense to have that half-day. But we came back on Thursday, which was Ju, January 2nd and 3rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2nd and 3rd.
No, another, through the chair, to throw another monkey wrench in it. And I, I think if we surveyed, we'd get these results because everyone seemed to really like having the day before Thanksgiving off. But if that was a half-day, that would give us another day to get out earlier in June.
I think the staff especially liked that.
I think they would.
I've had a lot of really positive feedback about that.
I know other districts don't give a full day before Thanksgiving.
No, but I just, from what I've heard, people really like it.
I know people like it.
I think it's so tricky nowadays because there are so many families that are scattered around, that there's a lot of traveling that goes on. So, it's a tough one.
I mean, I think going back to school on that Friday is an eyesore, but I wouldn't say that's out of the realm of possibilities. You know, like, if we're gonna, there's only so many days that we can move around, so.
Through the chair, do it.
I think if you're going to go and take that Monday and Tuesday, then they have to come back the 2nd, to me. I don't know, otherwise.
Oh, I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, even though it's a Friday, which kind of stinks, but I don't know.
But through the chair, I agree with Dr. Chamberlain in that like, the farther we push into the June, those high temps get, get dangerous in, in certain, in certain buildings and certain classrooms.
If you gave them the, brought kids back the 2nd, then you're not doing anything in June. You're giving, you're moving that day.
Oh, the 1 day? But then it would be a half-day on Monday?
It'd be a half-day Monday, and then you're off for two weeks.
I don't know. Being freezing cold with kids stuck in the house, at least in June, you can send them outside.
Yeah. I kind of like the way this sits right now, honestly.
I don't mind it.
I don't know. It's, um, yeah, certainly. If polling is what we, the route we want to take, that's fine. I don't care.
I have, so, through the chair, I don't have a, a dog in this little scenario here, the pony, if you will. But what about, can you take away a February vacation or an April vacation? Or that's part of their contract?
It's not their contract.
We don't touch that.
We did surveys on that a few years ago.
We took away February, right? It was, and I don't know how long it lasted, it was, it was
I will tell you when it was, it was when I started.
Yes.
As the Peckerchuck principal, when I said, you didn't tell me, I didn't have February vacation. It was a couple of years, right?
You had like two days off, right?
2015, no, no.
Was that for the move?
It was for the merge.
It was for the move, yes. Because we started very late, we started
Well, they shortened the year, so we got out late. It was when, it was when Julia Bancroft was moving to Swiss. And the middle school's moving from now Swiss over here. And so, they wanted an extended summer for all the moves. So, they did poll teachers, and they agreed that they would get rid of February vacation that year. And so, then we got out really early. I think we got out like June 9th or something. It was very early. And then for that year only, we didn't go back until after Labor Day. And so, it was a long summer for moves and furniture and all of those finishing things. But then after that, there was a very big push by the teachers to get February vacation back. They did not like not having February vacation.
Because you have a very long march.
Yeah.
March might be the longest month of the year.
It's January 74th, as far as I'm concerned.
No, March is like one thousandth million, it's, it's bad. So, you take away February vacation, then you have a really long February and a really long March, and then a lot of unhappy teachers.
Yeah.
Through the chair, my only other request would be if we can try to get satellite for the half-days, as I usually ask every year.
Yep, and we've done it for some this year.
Okay.
And last year, we did as well.
Great.
They have, they haven't done them for all of them, but I want to say at least two, if not three of the days they have off at satellite. So, they have work to do that.
This year, it's one. Through the chair.
It's only one?
So far, it's one. And where in January?
I think they do the May one. I think the May one is on the calendar.
They did one already, and I, and I'm pretty sure there was one coming up.
But it's not, it's not to 5:30, it's to 4:00.
It is shorter, because that's a long time, six hours for the kids.
Absolutely, especially if they can't be outside because of weather.
Yep, yep.
But you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yeah, five half-days.
Five half-days.
Five PD half-days.
Yeah. Like, like, half-days where you need, like, it's in the middle, you know?
It was less than when I came on board.
Yeah.
It used to be like 9, 10.
It was one every month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, the other choices, and, and I can put this out, it'll take me a little bit, but instead of coming back on the Friday, do you keep them on that Monday before Christmas and not have school on the 23rd? So, then it, that makes the last day the 16th.
Oh, you're saying a full day on the 22nd?
Yeah.
No school on the 23rd.
Instead of coming back on the Friday after?
Yeah.
I like that.
But
I like that.
I, I'm just, I think two weeks, I, I guess we'd have to poll because I, I think two weeks at home with children is a lot. I'm one who, you know, I do have family outside of the state, so I do understand that piece of it. I don't know. I would feel uncomfortable at least voting tonight to make it any bigger without more data.
Yeah, I definitely, through the chair, I definitely think we need to poll. I, but I'll be honest, like, thinking of the scenarios, like, I'm like, which one would I pick? I don't, I'd have to really like sit with it.
Well, and we spent a lot of time on this with the, with the building principals. We've gone around and around with different configurations, which we do every year. And so, you know, they have a bit of a pulse on their staff, too. I know that feedback from some of the union folks are happy with the, with the calendar this year. And, and I showed them this, I, I just had leadership look at it. And they were, yep, looks like this year looks good, you know, so.
And through the chair, I mean, in terms of the, the end of June and December, those few days, I'm not saying learning isn't happening, but it's not like intensive, so with kids, a few kids, we don't want kids missing school, but if they miss a few days there, I don't know.
Yeah, I will tell you that the heat in June is concerning to me.
Yeah, I agree with you.
The heat in June is concerning. And it does seem to be, you know, it just seems to hit at the absolute worst time, worst days, I think we dodged one this last year, was it this, right? Then Worcester ended up closing early.
They closed it, right?
Yep. And we just, we ended right before like a bad couple of days hit, right? So, we just missed it. But that's, even though our schools are in great shape for the most part to support kids when it's really hot, but, oh, I don't know what it does. It just drains everybody from what they want to do, you know?
Yeah.
So, so you, you'd like me to move forward with the survey? Yes? Okay.
I just think it would be nice to kind of see where people lie on that, to be honest. I mean, it doesn't matter to me either way, how it all pans out, but I would like to be respectful and ask how, how they feel about that stuff.
Maybe throw in the, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving if we're going to do a survey anyway.
Yeah.
Know what the answer's going to be. That way, at least we're doing all of our
But then you have data that supports, do you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, we all love data.
Through the chair, I like it just the way it is, though. You did a great job, Dr. Chamberlain. Appreciate everything that you do.
I can only imagine what it must be like to sit and do this kind of business.
No, I can't either.
The counting is fun.
But listen, I finally figured out how to do it with Excel, so I don't have to cut, like, make sure I have 180 and 184 all the time. It was life-changing. I don't know why I didn't think of it before, but.
A couple of virtual snow days would solve all these problems.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so about Christmas, the end of the year, and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Those are the dates that I'm asking about. Okay. I want to find a way, I think I can do an easy poll or something through some more, that maybe I can get more people to do it. I'm just going to do it as this whole separate thing. Right, just real quick. Okay.
Could you put it on social media?
Yeah, if I can get a, I'm going to
Because I find that that is the outlet we are, we are getting very younger. Parents are
Yeah.
28, and that's where they live, so.
Yeah. Yep, yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, that was me a couple of years ago. I just think it would be interesting to know.
That's good.
Jesse's getting ready to throw things down here.
It's always the school calendar. When I saw it on the agenda, I'm like, oh, God.
It is the time of year again where we make the decision if we're going to continue to participate in school choice. And so, we are, you are required to vote on the continuance of this in our district. Obviously, this has been an important part of our budget, budget for the, over the last decade. And we've welcomed lots of great students and families into the district through it. So, it is my recommendation that we continue. It does give us a substantial offset to our budget. And then what'll happen in another month or so is we'll bring forward numbers to be approved. So, this is the first step for that.
Okay, any discussion or questions or anything concerning that?
Through the chair, I love it. There are, I have kids that are, my friends of mine, they're kids, and they got to come this year, and now they're all together. And it's just to see the relationship that now can grow while they're in high school doing the same thing is really, really awesome. So, I love it.
That's good. All right. Seek a motion to approve then.
Make a motion to continue school choice program in Auburn public schools, at Auburn High and Auburn Middle, with the actual numbers of open school choice slots to be determined in March after viewing demographic data more closely.
I'll second.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I learned something new this week as a fairly still new superintendent. So we were recently contacted by a woman named Cindy Ahern from Gateway Academy of Shrewsbury. They are in the process of trying to move this private academy, which is a K to twelve private school to Auburn, um, into Bethel Lutheran Church. And so they're in the process of negotiating space to see if the space will work and all of the logistics that go around that. But what I learned from this as she reached out to me is that it is up to all of you to approve this private school in Auburn. So what I've included in your packet is our current policy relation with non-public schools, along with a sheet of frequently asked questions from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education related to having a, um, a private school come into our district. And I shared this with Cindy Ahern as well, and you'll see the second to the last page. It gives, uh, sample criteria for approval of a private school, which I shared with her, related to, you know, who's the population, the physical plant, what they're gonna use for curriculum, what kind of educational materials, um, how many staff they're going to have. Um, I think she said right now they have seventy-eight students, which I thought was a lot. I'm like, you sure you're gonna fit down there? But.
So is the preschool through the chair going away? Isn't there a preschool there?
I don't think they have it any, yeah, they're closed. You know, who the administration's gonna be, how they're gonna keep records, what kind of services they're going to provide. Um, they cannot be, if they're a special education school, they would have, if they're a school for students with special needs, they would have to be a separate approval, so they, that's not part of this, um, consideration. Um, what they're gonna provide for learning time and how they're going to assess their students. So that is all information that they will have to provide to us. Uh, Shrewsbury nicely sent to me what they received when they came to Shrewsbury, so I kind of have a little bit of a background on that, but, um, seems lovely, seems well-prepared, seems like she has her stuff together. So they're not looking to even move in until June, so there's plenty of time for you to look through this and kind of develop any questions. I think at some point we would want her to come before the committee to talk about these things, but I thought this was good information just to kind of get our thinking around what we might have to do to, uh, to approve all that.
Which church is Bethel Lutheran again?
Brind'ar.
It's on Brind'ar.
Okay, okay. It's tiny.
Yeah, so she said they work in pods, that the church is going to let them use the sanctuary part of that, like they have a performing arts kind of component to their curriculum, I guess. So that would be a separate space for that. Um, and she said, oh yeah, she said, there's plenty of room down there. I haven't been down there. I want to say it's maybe been ten years since I've actually been down in the basement. But she said that there's, there's plenty of space. She said they'll have more space than where they are now, so. I don't know. But I think that's part of it, that they're gonna have to provide us some of that, the information about the facility also, so. So anyway, just sharing of information now because, but that will be coming, that, that, that will come before the committee for approval.
All righty.
Through the chair, is it because they have an influx of students that they need the bigger space from Shrewsbury to?
Seemingly yes. She did say that the majority of her students are students from Worcester. Um, they look to serve underserved populations. That's kind of their focus. So, yeah, they, but that's where most of our kids come from, so.
All right.
Okay. Uh, we have been, uh, scrutinized this year in more ways than I can tell you. So, you know, we heard about, we have, um, Alan's going through his civil rights and E L tiered focus monitoring, and Greg's going through pupil services, and our food services goes, going through one, and Jen's gone through an audit, and now we have the MSBA school survey coming. So about a week ago, they sent me this huge workbook to be completed about everything about every one of our buildings. HVAC, plumbing, heating, propane, square footage, uh, number of nurses, the number of lunches, what happens outside of school hours, that Glenn and I have been plowing through to try and finish. It was a huge undertaking. And so next week we have a one-hour, um, phone call with them about all of these things. They do this to collect information across the state about school buildings to better be able to estimate the amount of money MSBA needs to fully fund where things need to be fixed. So we're going through that right now and it's, it's a big deal. Um, we don't get a, like a rating or a report or anything like that, but it, it is another compulsory thing that we have to go through, so. More to come and we'll keep you apprised if anything comes of it, but, um, it is another big undertaking for all of us here in central office.
Do they survey students too, or is that completely separate?
No, completely. MSBA is completely separate. MSBA is seriously physical plant.
All right.
Physical plant kind of things is what they're looking at.
Um, but then. Is that why Joe retired?
If he saw this, this workbook, I'm gonna tell you, he would have a heart attack. Even though I do think Glenn reached out to him for a few questions, so I think they're getting together to get a few answers for things, but, oh, it's just pages and pages and pages and pages and pages of questions. And some of it, I'm like, this is like I'm reading French, like it's all these mechanical, technical terms. I'm like, I have no idea. So, but Glenn's done a nice job with gathering a lot of it. And you know what? Our custodians have been so supportive and helpful to him. It's just been great. So just another great team in the district. The next one is that Auburn Senior High, uh, was about, uh, one of seventy-nine was, schools randomly selected to participate in the math, Massachusetts Youth Health Survey and the Youth Health Behavior Survey. Middle, Auburn Middle School is also selected. Uh, and so the way they work this is again, they're gathering information on practices of our youth and what are the kind of things that they're, they're doing. And so they tell you the day that they want to come and they say, send us a list of the classes that are, that are in session between nine and ten-thirty in the morning. You send them a list, they randomly pick two. Then you have to send permission forms out to those families to make sure that they want the kids to participate. Then they have someone actually come and administer the survey to the kids. And then that's that. So the middle school was done this past week. It was two classes and the high school is coming up. So another, another thing that we're trying to work through, but the compliance requirements this year have just been crazy.
Through the chair, will we get those results for our school?
I don't think so. I, I think we get the aggregate results when they get it from across the state. They'll share that with us, but no, I don't think we get our own.
I don't know. I'm a little miffed, I guess, that we, the school committee doesn't get to see the survey before it's presented to our students. You know, like that's something we should be approving before it's rolled out.
Yeah.
Uh, that doesn't fall on you either. I'm just saying.
It is somewhat of a, we don't really get much of a choice to doing it. I may be able to, I think they may have shared with the principals. They didn't share with me, but they may have shared the questions. So if you'd like, I can bring those forward the next time. Some of them are, I, I, I think Matt, um, in just talking about it said, um, you know, do you use drugs? Do you smoke? Do you vape? Like those kind of. Yes, very similar to Esper. A lot of the similar kind of questions about adolescent behavior. So. Yeah.
All right.
I know. And then we don't get the results.
No, I know.
Yeah.
It's insane.
I just need our kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just gonna borrow them real quick.
So the last item I did send out in my recent communication to families, but I think this is something that's gonna have a big impact on Auburn High School. They're building a new bank, uh, in that parking lot where, uh, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be. If you'll see now, there's a big chain link fence up around it. Uh, I did not realize that we had a number of families who would park there in the afternoon for pickup at the high school instead of going up in the back, so.
A lot of them.
We've had, um, John O'Brien, our SRO, has been out there talking to families to saying, no, you can't do this anymore. And there was someone that communicated, called Jen, called the high school, called a number of people, like they can't park, parking here and kids can't be there and parents can't be waiting and all that stuff. So I don't think that's happening anymore. I mean, there's a huge chain link fence with one little narrow, uh, passageway now, so there's not much parking there now, but it does pose, um, some challenges for us when we think about graduation, when we think about some of the bigger events that take place at the high school, so.
Games.
Yeah, some of the bigger football games. I know one of the games I went to this year, I parked like down like by the entrance of Shaw's because the whole parking lot was full. So I don't know if we're gonna have to look at Reliant, if we're gonna have to look at Swanson Road and Transportation. I, I don't, we're, we're looking into some options, but that's gonna have a, have a big impact on us.
Through the chairs, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, is this forever or is it just during the construction and then?
This is forever. They said there, it's gonna be posted that it's for bank parking only. And I, there are, I think somewhat rumors, but I think Planet Fitness is going in where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be. So now if you think you have two banks plus Planet Fitness, I don't know how much open parking is gonna be, but they said no, it's gonna be for, for customers only.
So my concern is, I mean, not that they're gonna do anything anyway, but it's gonna fall over to the library. Now we've got kids crossing that major intersection to get over.
Yeah. The only thing with that is usually when we have those big crowds, because we, we also use the library now. Um, we typically have police at that.
But I mean, every day after school, will there be, uh?
No.
Yeah.
We have plenty of parking. So they actually counted. We had like forty empty parking spaces on a typical day at Auburn High. So there are, there's room for those that want.
Parent pickup, because that seemed to be.
Well, parent pickup, but they don't, they just don't want to wait in the line.
Yeah, right.
But I can't help that. They're gonna have to wait in the line.
I just don't want them waiting at the library instead, and then we've got kids running across that intersection.
We'll have to watch for that. I mean, I would hope not, because that is not.
Might want to put it out there in the notification or whatever.
Or at Mickey D's.
I mean, at least there's always, a crossing guard, yeah, but.
And they have the lights there too. Uh, you know, the, the flashing, yeah. Um, but it's, it's, it's going to have an impact. There's no doubt about it. It's going to have an impact.
I first thought was graduation.
Yeah.
When I saw that chain link, I was like, uh-oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Graduation gets hacked.
So, um, I think Dan was gonna reach out to Reliant because typically Reliant's not open at the times that we would need it, right? So it's a little bit of a walk. There's no doubt about it. Um, but.
Graduation's in June, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah. Drop everybody off. Go park your car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We talked about using the small buses. Um, even though they only fit twelve people at a time, so that's a lot of back and forth, but we'll, we'll figure it out. So more to come, but I wanted it out there again to the community to just remind folks that they should not be there and they are more than happy to tow if, if people are parked there, so. Yeah. And I think that's it for me for tonight.
Turn it over to you, Mr. Keller.
All right, so, uh, tonight's teacher and learning report, uh, actually gets into, uh, empowering writers. You actually got the entree, uh, before, uh, tonight with, um, Ms. Kane, Quinn and Lila. So they did a really nice job of, of kind of digging into what, uh, empowering writing is, but, uh, we made a goal coming into this year is of transforming our writing instruction in grades K to five, uh, which is not to say that we don't have, um, good teachers, uh, who know how to, uh, explain writing, but I will say that I've talked to many teachers, uh, having been an English teacher myself, um, there is not a lot of instruction coming out of teaching colleges around how to teach writing. Um, and those teachers who are comfortable teaching writing, um, you might have, um, we, it's hard to develop consistencies from grade to grade, uh, and across the grade level. And so, um, this has been a major, um, point of emphasis, um, since I've arrived and even before. And so really came down to kind of triangulating our data. So looking at our, our eye-ready data, listening to teachers and principals talk about what they felt like their needs were, and then also looking at our MCAS data, um, where writing consistently shows up as an area of, uh, need for us. Um, and I think you all know that, uh, writing is not just something that happens in English language arts class. Um, it's, um, teaching writing, helping students develop writing skills, um, enhance their ability to recall, make connections, synthesize information, critical thinking. Writing is not just a tool to assess learning, but it's, uh, something that promotes learning. Um, and so we think it's, uh, a lot, uh, a really important initiative to, to get behind. Um, so we looked at our professional development this year and identified, this, we, obviously we had some conversation around school calendar, around half-days, so we identified three half-days that our, um, professional development is being delivered to our K through five teachers, and we've broken that up into a K-one group and a grades two-five group. And ultimately looked at a lot of different providers of writing professional development and selected Empowering Writers. Um, they've been in business, uh, for twenty-six years. It was founded by a second-grade teacher who, you know, uh, her story is that she started teaching, um, and sat down to begin writing, and she's like, I have no idea how to teach these kids writing. And was meeting with them individually and working with them one-on-one and, uh, eventually kind of developed this, this curriculum. Um, and so they are, uh, teachers themselves, the people who come out and provide professional, professional development were and/or are teachers. Um, they focus on both reading comprehension and writing. I think you heard a little bit of that tonight, uh, when Ms. Kane was talking. It's not just teaching writing, but it's also helping them to understand how authors go about their practice. Uh, really focusing on manageable skills. And again, uh, as somebody who, uh, used to teach seventh and eighth grade English and worked with teachers, um, a lot of the teaching of writing can feel overwhelming, but by having a progression of skills, um, we feel, uh, as though our students are gonna be really well-prepared, uh, to write like Chloe did, uh, when she read her piece tonight. Uh, it's aimed at creating writers, so we're constantly talking in the classroom about, look at what a writer did here, and then helping kids feel as though they are writers, because ultimately they are. And, and being process-oriented. Uh, and the other big piece about Empowering Writers that I wanted to mention too is it's, it's not a, they're not coming in with all these different pieces that kids have to read and we have to buy that product. It is connected to Wonders. As you may recall, we, uh, brought down a new, uh, textbook last year, uh, Wonders, and so we are able to use those Wonders pieces and they work with districts that have Wonders, and so that's, that was been really important as well, um, component. Um, you heard, um, Mrs. Kane talk tonight about, um, the methodology, so it all starts with, uh, a whole class instruction. Um, we're establishing common language and, uh, a shared experience among, uh, students. So if, for instance, we were talking about narrative writing and we might talk about, um, how writers or authors begin, uh, um, a piece and what that entertaining beginning would be. Teachers would give an example of some boring openings to a story and kids would talk about why that's boring or why it's not interesting. So they might, you may have seen some of these stories. I used to have, uh, kids write these pieces that would begin with, this story is about, or my name is. And so we talk about why that doesn't engage the reader and we talk about how we might, uh, need to have a hook. And so they'll talk about specific ways that you can hook your audience. Action, dialogue, question, sounds. Teachers will then read stories together with their students and they'll talk about how the writer goes about doing that. So what did you notice in this piece? What did that writer do? Oh, they used a sound and they pulled us in, or they used a piece of dialogue. They're not starting at the beginning of a story. They might be starting closer to, uh, where the action takes place. Um, and then, um, so they were modeling that, the, the teacher's talking as though they are the author. Hey, how can I make this piece a little bit more exciting? Uh, and then students get, uh, the opportunity to try it back at their desks and then discuss as a whole group. There's peer conferencing that's, uh, involved in that. And then they look at boring pieces at their desks and then try and make it more exciting and how they can go about doing that. Uh, at the conclusion of, uh, this, you know, ultimately as a result of the, the six hours of training that teachers are getting, uh, our plan is to have them have these foundational skills that their teacher, that the students are actually able to demonstrate. Um, they're able to go through text, as you heard Mrs. Kane talk about tonight, as they were annotating. The complex task of writing, turn it into this kind of step-by-step approach. Um, common language is really important. Uh, we'll look at the graphic organizers in a minute, but those were alluded to earlier as well. Um, but having everybody use the same, uh, graphic organizer, that's one of the things that Dr. Chamberlain talked to me about, I think on our, on my first day in the district is, you know, all these graphic organizers look really good and serve a purpose, but when you're using five different ones every year and then you get ten more the following year, that you're not building that skill and building that knowledge and understanding. Um, and so that gets into that vertical integration. Um, so this, I won't, uh, belabor this because you kind of got a little snapshot of that, but, um, you know, here's some examples of where students were going through and identifying, you know, these different areas. So they, uh, learned about the predictable components of a story, um, that they're gonna find in every text. They began by circling it, underlining topic sentences, uh, writing blurbs about what the main ideas were. And this is kind of a progression that you go, uh, across the way. So it's very guided in the beginning and slowly as you get toward that third piece there where it's venomous snakes versus constrictors, um, it is a lot less teacher-led and teacher-directed and students are, uh, working on this on their own. Um, the ultimate goal, of course, is for, for them to be able to do so on their own without teacher direction. Um, and this is a graphic of them talking about why we annotate, um, why they go back and look at text and help to understand, uh, where main ideas, topic sentences and conclusions were, um, and developing them as, and feeling as though they're experts in why, um, texts are annotated. So this is the graphic organizers and there are two graphic organizers, uh, that we use throughout the program. So we're implementing this in K to five this year. The, the goal is to then bring this into grades six through eight next year as per their professional development. But the left side is that the narrative writing diamond that, um, the students talked about. And then the right side is the informational pillar. Um, you know, and you can see the diamond really reflects the size of what each of those pieces are. So the main event is in the middle and that's where the majority of your story is going to revolve around that main event, and that's why that piece is larger. Uh, I talked earlier about the entertaining beginning, you know, kind of building up to that, and then, um, at the bottom, that extended ending. Uh, so that's the narrative piece. Um, and the goal ultimately with both of these is for this to be internalized. So they get that repetition consistently and then by a certain level, and it's going to depend on the student, of course. Um, you know, I, as a former seventh and eighth grade teacher, I had students in eighth grade that were still using graphic organizers, which was fine. And many students who had kind of graduated past that point, who had internalized these pieces. Um, but we want everybody to, to work on developing those skills. Uh, there's one thing I want to mention here. Okay, yeah. Oh, there we go. Um, and, you know, mentioning this earlier as well, so the reading-writing connection. So this is, I believe, a first-grade classroom. Um, you know, there, we, we want kids to be thinking like they're writers, um, and, and behaving like writers. Um, and the goal is to be creating writers. And so, um, you know, this is, uh, one of the students who was, was reading through a piece and talked about what the story is about, what the problem was, how the problem was solved, the author's purpose, which is pretty, pretty, um, uh, advanced language to be having, uh, in this classroom, but like, let's talk about why the author was doing this. So we're constantly talking about what the author is doing and helping students to learn and begin to, um, internalize some skills about thinking about themselves as an author. I will say for, for me, I didn't really feel like I learned much about writing as a, as a student until I actually had to like copy and imitate some writers. It was one of my best classes that I had in college and it kind of developed my own style. And so that's, you know, that's a advanced version of this, but ultimately that's one of the goals of, um, Empowering Writers. And here you can see, um, you know, this is, um, a project that was done in a grade, I believe this is a grade-two class, so they, uh, brainstormed using the narrative diamond. They then selected ideas, um, and read a sample book and aligned it to the diamond. So they were plugging it in using a, a, another author's piece, and now they've been working on writing some of their own stories. Um, so this is them then checking their own pieces against the narrative writing diamond. So, uh, that was just a snapshot. Um, you, again, a much better presentation earlier in the evening about it, uh, with students kind of bringing it to life, but, um, it is an exciting initiative that is underway and I think we're gonna see some great results. And like I said, uh, we've already gotten really positive feedback from teachers and, um, of how they're implementing it. And then, uh, next year the plan is to continue to roll this out and move it into grades six through eight. And we actually have some middle school teachers who are going to a one-day workshop. I believe it's, um, at the beginning of, uh, February. Um, and they'll be able to bring some of these pieces back from the Empowering Writers workshop that they're doing there.
I think the key is to come up with innovative ideas, like the Loch Ness Monster, like stuff that's gonna get the kids, you know?
Loved it. They loved it. And then there was the whole thing at the, at the end about their opinion. So she had them first do a, like a four corners. Who thinks it's, who thinks it's not real? Who thinks it might be true? Who thinks it's definitely true and who just has no idea? And then she had them do that again at the end after they had read the piece and talked about the details and all that. It was great. I mean, they were just in it. And that's when kids learn, you know, when the ta, I, I agree. And, and then this, right, about a swimming pool at school. I mean, it's, yeah, right? So it does. It makes a big difference to have those engaging thoughts.
Say, no, it's not happening.
A big part of.
For you, Jen.
A big part of this is, is those authentic experiences. So helping kids, um, you know, engage in the task because they have, there's something that they're excited about.
Yeah.
Through the chair, writing takes so much practice. I mean, I, I don't think I had a good teacher of writing until I really got to college.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and so I think that this is great for the teachers because like you said, we don't, like teachers in general, we don't get taught how to teach writing. It's kind of like, well, you, you wrote to get in here, like you're fine, you figure it out. And, and I think we're all kind of going through that right now. It's like, how do we do this? Yep.
That's cool.
Definitely. Through the chair, they knew the process though. They were like the diamond and the pillar and the pros, like they knew it. And I'm literally like, I don't, I don't know if I know it. You know what I mean?
And it's exciting to see that too.
Fifth grade?
Fourth grades are phenomenal in school.
Yeah. And it's exciting too because they've only had it for a couple of months now. So, you know, imagine the fifth graders we'll have in front of us after having gone through it for five years and, and.
There's gonna be better writers than half of us.
I hope so.
I, I will tell you too. I will tell you too, you could tell she was excited about it when I was in her class that day. Like, it was, it, it was exciting for her too, you know? And that's, you know, that's a win for everybody.
Definite W, absolutely.
Be honest with the chair that every time Alan presents PD that you guys are doing, I wanna join. I'm like, sign me up, I'd like to hide home. So, I don't, I don't know if it's just how you present it, or just like, you're bringing in some great stuff, which I think is the second one, I think you're bringing in some great stuff, because it makes me wanna go.
Well, you know, and this, you know, I will say, like, Dr. Lopez, Mrs. Kane, you know, the, the teachers were, this isn't, you know, just like pushing this on them, these were conversations that we've had about things that we needed. And so it's, it's a little bit of everybody, so it's a community.
Yep. Great. Good, good. So it seems like Wonders is doing well, though.
Yeah, Wonders is doing really well, yes. Yeah, yeah, that's been great, and integrating the two of these has been great as well.
Great. All righty, well, thank you for that. All right, we'll turn it over to you, Jen.
All right, so I am providing you with a year-to-date budget report that does not have a pool in it for the FY twenty-five school year dated January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, for your review. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Any questions for the staff?
I thumbed through, I didn't see anything.
And I've also provided a listing of budget transfers dated January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, between the same series and between different series, for which I am seeking your approval. I make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second.
No pool?
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we do need executive session tonight, so I seek a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss the bargaining position with personnel that could be compromised if discussed in open session, and we will not return to open session.
I'll second. Okay, roll call vote, Sam?
President.
Oh, aye. Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Or aye.
Whatever. All right, it is a vote.
We're all gonna get a Robert's Rules book.
Yes. All right.
That's it?
That's it. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.